Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the National Capitol Planning Commission's January 6, 2022 Public Meeting. Ms. Costa, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Steingasser.
Present.
Commissioner McMahon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Argo.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Chair White.
Here.
All right. Commissioner Wright.
I'm here. Happy New Year.
And the same to you. Commissioner Dixon.
Here and as well. Happy New Year to all.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
And Commissioner Davenport.
Present.
Thank you. I'll note that Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Schuyler, General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of Urban Planning and Urban Design and Plan Review, are also attending this meeting.
Thank you. While noting the presence of a quorum, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today's meeting is livestreamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection to the revised agenda as posted, it is adopted as the order of business. And now we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, I would like to pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around the world. In response to the COVID-19 Guidelines on Public Gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting Commission business. Votes by the Commission will be conducted by roll call. When Commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During Commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each Commissioner if they have any questions or comments. During deliberations, all Commissioners should be on video during that time unless you are experiencing technical issues. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Our next is Agenda Item Number Two is the Report of the Chair. And I want to hope, say that I hope everyone had a safe, joyous holiday season, and that you're all looking forward to the many exciting projects and initiatives that NCPC will work on in 2022. And just to note that I've called a special Commission meeting on February 16. This session will be used to familiarize the Commission in conducting meetings using the Zoom online platform. And we will also hear an important information presentation on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative at that time. Mr. Acosta will provide more details in his remarks. And that brings us to Agenda Item Number Three, the Report of our Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year. As the Chair announced, we will move our online meeting platform and our March Commission meeting from Microsoft Team to Zoom. This change will provide more flexibility and better security. We will hold a special Commission meeting on February 16 to enable the Commission and staff to test this platform. Staff will contact Commissioners over the coming month to answer your questions and provide specific instructions for using Zoom at our Commission meeting. At the February 16 Special Meeting, staff will present three Pennsylvania Avenue Concept Alternatives we intend to release for public comment. The Concept Alternatives incorporate many of the ideas and recommendations made by our expert panel at last June's Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative Public Event. We hope that members of the Commission and the public can attend. Finally, on Thursday, January 27 at noon, NCPC is pleased to host Dr. Elizabeth Ruhl, Assistant Professor of Race, Gender, and Culture Studies at American University and a citizen of the Chickasaw Nation, for an online public presentation. Dr. Ruhl will discuss the history and presence of Native Americans in the Washington region to provide a broader understanding of tribal nations and how they interact with other government, levels of government. And you'll find this information on our website. So that concludes my report for this month, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the Commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta. Does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, we will move to Agenda Item Four, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year to you and all of the Commissioners. I do have two items that I would like to report today. The first is a provision, Section 6605, that was contained in Senate Bill 1605, which is the National Defense Authorization Act for Fiscal Year 2002. The particular provision authorizes the location of the Global War on Terrorism Memorial to be located on the Reserve as that term is defined in the Commemorative Works Act. And except for the provision prohibiting the location of memorials on the Reserve, it requires the memorial to comply with all remaining provisions of the CWA. The bill was passed by both Houses of Congress, signed by the President, and became public law on December 27, 2021. The second is H.R. 1664, which is a bill to authorize the National Medal of Honor Museum Foundation to establish a commemorative work in the District of Columbia and its environs. This was passed by both Houses of Congress, signed by the President, became public law on December 27, 2021. It authorizes the National Medal of Honor Museum Foundation to establish a commemorative work on federal land in the District of Columbia and its environs to honor the extraordinary acts of valor, selfless service, and sacrifice displayed by Medal of Honor recipients. Establishment of the commemorative work shall be in accordance with requirements of the Commemorative Works Act. This concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Schuyler. Does the Commission have any questions? Hearing none, we will keep moving on. There are no consent items on our calendar this month, but we do want to get started on the Open Session Agenda Item 5A, Approval of Preliminary and Final Site Development Plans for the National Arboretum Fence Replacement and Gate Improvement Project. And we will be hearing from Mr. Wild.
Thank you very much. Can you see and hear my presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair White and members of the Commission. The United States Department of Agriculture has submitted preliminary and final plans for a section of new replacement perimeter fence and gate improvements at the United States National Arboretum, which is located in northeast Washington, D.C. The Commission previously reviewed the project as a concept proposal in May 2019, and since that time, the arboretum has worked to refine its design and to complete the Section 106 process, concluding with a no adverse effect finding by the arboretum in concurrence by the D.C. State Historic Preservation Office. As this is a final review by our Commission, we need to consider issues such as scale and context, the project's compatibility with future arboretum and district plans, and the proposal's potential to impact the historic character of the arboretum as a listed property on the National Register of Historic Places and D.C. Inventory of Historic Sites. Here's a satellite photo of the 446-acre arboretum property, which is 2.3 miles to the northeast of the U.S. Capitol Building. The irregularly shaped property is situated between New York Avenue to the north with adjacent sections of Bladensburg Road and R Street to the west and M Street to the south. The current main public gate to the arboretum is located at the end of R Street. And here you can see a variety of adjacent and nearby land uses with Anacostia Park to the south and east, residential neighborhoods to the south, southwest, and west, and various commercial areas shown here in yellow to the northwest and north. The arboretum mission is to enhance the economic, environmental, and aesthetic value of ornamental and landscape plants through long-term, multidisciplinary research, conservation of genetic resources, and interpretive gardens and exhibits. Early American leaders envisioned a national garden where science could be applied to the country's agricultural resources to advance national economic prosperity. In response, Congress passed the National Arboretum Act on March 4, 1927, to establish the arboretum for the purposes of research and education in concerning tree and plant life. Currently, more than 600,000 people visit the arboretum annually to appreciate its balance of cultivated gardens and natural landscapes, to enjoy the grounds as a recreational amenity, and to learn about horticulture. As part of the USDA's Agricultural Research Service, the arboretum employs scientists who maintain a large and invaluable inventory of plants to support research and for the nation and around the world. The current arboretum master plan is from 2000 with a later 2007 modification, and the arboretum is now updating its master plan to reinforce its campus core through future development, to improve interior circulation and perimeter accessibility, and to augment its ecological character, scientific mission, and historic assets. NCPC recently commented favorably on a concept of the plan in April 2021, and the arboretum continues to refine the plan, which they will submit for future draft review by our Commission. The purpose of the project here today is to improve the appearance and security of the arboretum by replacing 2.4 miles of perimeter fencing, realigning its fence line along New York Avenue, and modifying several perimeter gates. It's important to note that this project, which is much needed due to the deterioration of the existing fence, would not preclude any future projects or changes that are being considered through the new master plan update. And there are no operational gate changes being proposed as part of this project at this time. Arboretum's current perimeter fence is in poor condition with an inconsistent design since the fence was installed in different sections over a period of 50-plus years. This graphic shows the more public-facing sides of the arboretum with its current ornamental black picket fencing highlighted here in red. The remainder of the perimeter, shown here in purple, adjacent to the National Park Service property, is protected by an eight-foot-high chain-link fence that meets the arboretum's current fence height requirements. And so there are no additional plans for any other fence improvements once this project is complete. Here are several photos that give you a sense of what the perimeter fence currently looks like today. The arboretum would install a new, similar style of black picket fencing along its perimeter, shown here in red, with a consistent eight-foot height and narrower four-inch-on-center spacing. And the new fence specifications are meant to reduce the number of deer intrusions onto the property, which would better protect the arboretum's valuable and unique specimen plantings. The new fence line would be adjusted along much of the arboretum's north side, as shown here, with one section pushed outward closer to New York Avenue along the arboretum property line, and one section pulled back onto arboretum property out of public space. However, the fence line would remain in public space in two locations, as shown here on this slide. At the Conifer Road Gate location, the future fence line would remain in public space to tie into each of the gate's historic stone columns or stone piers, which are currently located several feet off of arboretum property. The previous 2019 project proposal would have relocated and replaced this gate back onto arboretum property. However, the arboretum elected to preserve the gate based on Section 106 consultations with the D.C. Spoh and NCPC. In the second location, near the Hickey Run Service Gate, the current fence line extends across a district highway dedication area that encompasses a stormwater management facility. And the project would maintain the fence line and gate here to continue to allow district access to maintain and monitor the facility, but with the new taller eight-foot-high fencing and matching gates. And here I would like to note that the arboretum will have to submit these project locations to the District's Public Space Committee for review and approval prior to construction. And we note this in our final review recommendation at the end of my presentation. Of the seven existing perimeter gates within the project area, three of the gates are currently abandoned, and four gates are operational at this time. The project would remove two of the abandoned gates and improve two operational gates all along New York Avenue. The other gates, shown here in yellow, would be preserved in their current condition. Besides the Hickey Run Gate, which would be replaced with new gates to match the new fence design, the arboretum would replace the New York Avenue double swing gates and replace the existing paver access driveway with a new concrete driveway, as shown here in this rendering. However, all four of the gate's distinctive stone piers would be preserved, and the arboretum would salvage the original swing gates for use elsewhere on its grounds in the future. The gate currently functions as a public entrance. However, the arboretum may limit its future use to service and delivery traffic only as part of its master plan update, which is considering broader accessibility and circulation changes around the property. Here is a rendering that shows the main public R Street gate with new fencing that ties into the gate's concrete walls. And the arboretum would continue to use R Street as its main gate until a new gate is constructed along Bladensburg Road, as shown here on this concept master plan update graphic. The main gate relocation was initially proposed as part of the arboretum's 2000 master plan and remains in the 2020 update that is currently under development. Here is a ground view of the future gate site just to the north of Gate 7 with a chain-link fence section that would be replaced with new picket fencing as part of this project. The new gate access would reduce arboretum-related traffic along R Street, which is a local residential roadway, and also give the arboretum a greater visual presence along a higher-volume Bladensburg Road. Once the Bladensburg Gate is operational, the R Street Gate would be changed to permit staff use only, but the gate would still permit public pedestrian and bicycle access through the gate as it does today. Another planned accessibility improvement would be to reopen the abandoned M Street Gate to public bicycle and pedestrian access. The gate is located along an abandoned section of M Street right-of-way, as shown here on the slide, which is under DDOT jurisdiction. And DDOT would have to approve the right-of-way to allow safe pedestrian and bicycle access to reach the gate, as we noted previously in our 2019 review comments. One last project of note that is reflected in the 2020 master plan update is the planned Anacostia River Walk Trail Extension, which would improve connectivity between Kennelworth Park and the arboretum with a new 390-foot continuous span bridge across the river. NCPC previously reviewed concept plans for this back in 2017, and the National Park Service and DDOT continue to develop the project and plan to submit a more refined proposal to NCPC for preliminary review in the future. The arboretum will study these perimeter accessibility changes and other interior circulation improvements through their ongoing master plan update, which is based on several objectives that include enhancing the arboretum's scientific mission and unique ecological and cultural heritage, optimizing interior circulation and off-site connectivity, and reinforcing the campus core through new modernist development. As part of the master plan development process, which is ongoing, the arboretum will need to coordinate its plans with federal, district, and local stakeholders that include NCPC, the National Park Service, DDOT, District Office of Planning, the local ANC, and other community groups. And this will ensure that district, community, and arboretum planning efforts successfully align. And we note these points in the final Executive Director's recommendation before you here today. With that, that concludes my presentation. Dr. Richard Olson, who serves as the arboretum Director, as well as several of his project consultants, and I are now available for any questions by the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild. Before we start any public testimony, do any Commissioners have questions for Mr. Wild or the arboretum representatives? Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I just wondered in Slide 31, I wasn't clear where the Langston Golf Course is on that other side. Does this path enter into the Langston Golf Course at all? What's the relationship? Slide 31, I think it was.
Okay.
I know you go across the river of the whatever.
So Dr. Olson would be a better person to ask about exact kind of locations of entry with the Langston Golf Course.
I think it seems to be further south of this, southeast, but I wasn't clear.
Let me go back to that earlier kind of land use graphic. Right here.
Yeah.
So yeah, I do know there's currently a perimeter fence that extends around the golf course. The golf course here, you can kind of see one of the fairways right here. As to the exact gate locations, again, Dr. Olson, you know, is available to, hopefully he can chime in and comment on that.
Right, yeah. So the entire, the Park Service has no fencing here. Every fence on our property or on the property line is our fence. We have no direct connections with Langston. And with regards to the perimeter fence project, we don't approach Langston. So as Michael pointed out, the separation between Langston Golf Course and the National Arboretum to the south is the defunct M Street right-of-way that is part of DDOT. And then it ends at the western boundary of Langston. So I don't know if that answers your question, but the other gate, go ahead.
Someone mentioned the fairway. I'm not sure I know where it is on the, I think it's the fourth hole, but I'm not sure. It's a long par five.
Yeah, that tee box gets really close to our property. We get to see people when they need to take them all.
I probably wing some balls across that into your property. I'm not sure, but I got a feel for it now. Thank you for your comment and information. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? Hearing none at the moment. We do have one person signed up to speak. Ms. Dombrowski, you will have five minutes to provide your testimony as you're representing the Anacostia Watershed Citizen Community Advisory Committee.
So welcome.
Very much.
Sorry. It's the Community Advisory Committee, not the citizens. We're trying to be a little more inclusive. Good afternoon. My name's Mary Ann Dombrowski, representing the Anacostia Watershed Community Advisory Committee. So thank you for letting us represent the interests of our community and the watershed concerning this project. And we're grateful also to the District of Columbia, which is leading the way in the complex effort to transform the Anacostia River Corridor, of which the arboretum is a part. First, I'd like to address the three main intentions stated in the project summary. Remove to abandon New York Avenue gates and replace with a swing gate. We see this as an opportunity to communicate the arboretum's mission physically and symbolically. Certain details communicate messages to the neighborhood. Some subtle changes can make this message positive and inclusive. We appreciate the arboretum sensitivity to the neighbors, and I'll go into specifics later on. Undertake limited shrub clearance. Invasive plants are a threat to the security of the collection, physical plant, and to visitors. It's our hope that the arboretum will lead the way and inspire their neighbors to address the threat. Change of function of the remaining public New York Avenue gates. We urge the arboretum to continue to remain flexible in response to local planning and development. Continue to integrate the facility into the fabric of the neighborhood and welcome pedestrians, visitors to each of the four main cardinal gates. Our interest in this project stems from the prominence of the arboretum as a unique natural area and crown jewel of the upper Anacostia, a two-mile free-flowing river reach, the shoreline of which it shares with five other unique natural areas. The New York Avenue gate is the face of the arboretum for many. It's very prominent and the longest vista of any other gate. The proposed plan diminishes its appearance by removing the brick apron, downgrading the gate, replacing the curved fence. Replacement in mind will retain its appearance despite any functional change in use. Enhanced planning and retention of the monumental logo sign would introduce the collection and provide identity at this prominent and highly visible location. Development of this corridor may prove attractive to pedestrians who might use this entrance without disturbing its other uses. The south gate. If height of the new decorative fence is adequate for security, redundant enclosures could be removed. The chain-link and jersey barrier create an eyesore to the adjacent neighborhood and to the historic Langston Golf Course. It's understood that major improvements must await coordination with other projects, but failing to include this gate in a project aimed at improving the perimeter gives the appearance of neglect. Installing the ornamental gate fence at grade, providing monumental logo sign, and modest planting at this location would be great improvements. The concrete rubble and other defunct security measures should also be removed. I'm sure that's part of the plan. Active transportation and visitor access. We request that planning for a bridge to the arboretum be put on hold pending resolution of important efforts such as the arboretum master plan, Kennelworth Park, and the Anacostia River Corridor assessment. The bridge proposal is damaging to the river, limits river use for water-dependent activities, and destroys the most extensive at two-mile natural urban river reach in a major U.S. city. The proposed bridge and trail create a bypass, a shortcut, which neither connects adjacent neighborhoods to the arboretum, nor does it create a monumental connection between two of the district's most unique and cherished parks. A river crossing could be located, co-located with existing bridges, thereby preserving this unique natural area. To the extent possible, the natural area should be served by natural surface trails with as little disturbance as possible. The river gate. The National Park Service property between the arboretum and the river serve as a riverfront terrace for the arboretum. Enhancing this area and upgrading access from the river is an opportunity which must not be squandered. Plants must be coordinated with, not driven by transportation planning efforts. Development of this gate provides an opportunity to display riparian planting and provide a unique experience of the Anacostia River. The shoreline would be obliterated by such a massive element as the proposed bridge. Devoting the shoreline on both sides to the river to transportation is a misuse of waterfront properties subject to the Capitol Crime Act. The Hickey Run and Confluence.
That's five minutes, Mrs. Dombrowski.
Oh, it is. Oh, geez. Okay. Okay. There was one sentence I'd like to include, if that's all right. One more.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. When Major Bowser recognized and invested in enhancing Kingman inherited Gilein for recreational and educational activities, and the DOE chose Kingman Lake as an early action area, a new vision for the upper Anacostia was set in motion. This is not in planning. It is happening. We hope the arboretum plants will, and all the plans for that particular part of the Anacostia will be driven by this new vision. So that's it. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dombrowski. Are there any questions for Ms. Dombrowski from the Commissioners? Hearing none. Ms. Dombrowski, I just want to thank you. We really appreciate your thoughtful and very thoroughly written remarks as well. It really helps us understand better the context of the larger environment in which the arboretum is located, and we really appreciate the efforts of the community to be engaged in this very precious resource. So thank you very much. So I'll now open it up to the Commission for discussion, starting with Commissioner May, and then go in a round-robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion, and we will turn to Commissioner May.
Yeah. I don't think I have a lot to say that I haven't said before, particularly most recently in the master plan discussion back in the spring. I mean, certainly, we welcome the improvements that are being planned in the fences and the gates. It makes sense to try to move on what can be done, even if the bigger visions can't be realized at the moment. But I will just reiterate some disappointment that the M Street gate is not being addressed more aggressively at this stage. We do, you know, I agree with Ms. Dombrowski that this is an important connection to the community, and it's one that I am and it's one that I am personally familiar with from, you know, having used that. I think I've used that gate in the past. I don't know how long ago it closed, but maybe I'm just imagining it, but I remember being up there and being able to get to it from the community. It's just a real disappointment because it is not just an important connection to the community. I think it's an important connection to the rest of the city. For those folks who have not been to that part of the city, it is a real high point. And the view from there down Maryland Avenue, I think draws a connection to the Capitol that you don't really experience in other ways from other locations. And I just feel like it's such an important sort of symbolic connection to the rest of the city. It's disappointing that it's not being addressed now. I think I can understand why. I'm not really looking for an answer. You know, I understand the limitations that the arboretum is operating under. I would just encourage that whatever can be done to do that, or its importance as a connection to the community, as that's a connection to the city, and ultimately as a connection to the Anacostia River Walk Trail and Bridge, which is moving along ever so slowly. I just think that's a very important thing to be like that. And of course, I would love someday to see that the US of, uh, Blaineburg Avenue as well, because I've been driving by that curb cut to nowhere for, it seems like, a gazing. But, yeah, the M Street gate is the most pressing for us. Otherwise, very supportive of all this moving ahead. We'd just like to see as much more actually be possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Thank you, Chairperson White. I have no additional comments, and I think what I would like to do is align myself with those made by Commissioner May at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
I don't have much to add either. I think the plan is well conceived. I think most welcome to me is that there's more attention paid to the entrance, which you can quickly pass by and not realize that you've passed it and that you're a welcome visitor. And now it, I think they've gone a long way to remedying that and making it very clear that this is a public, that the visitor experience is valued and that people are welcome to come in. I've been in a traffic jam on, I guess it's Bladensburg many times, and so I knew it was there. But I think if you were going 40 miles an hour, you'd be quickly faced with doing a U-turn when you got to New York Avenue, which is no easy feat. That sounds kind of silly to mention, but lots of times you want to do something, and then when it becomes inconvenient, you say, oh, well, I'll just go get lunch instead. So it's important to make it easy, and I think the plan addresses that.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
Hi. Hi. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis. I'm sorry, Commissioner Cash.
Thanks for that. No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Also, no questions for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Davenport.
I just had a question about the M Street issue and what the arboretum has done to sort of monitor, update, mitigate any concerns that originally necessitated the closure of that gate and how that sort of works into the long-term planning of the arboretum.
The, thank you. Yeah, thank you for the question. The closure of that gate was due to crime and security issues really throughout the eighties and culminating in the 1990s. You can read about it in the newspaper if you want to Google it. Also, cut through traffic, police chases. And the fact that then, and end of the day, that since the city never developed the way that it was supposed to along the original lines with access from Baltimore-Washington Parkway to Maryland, and you would be received by the National Arboretum as you come into this glorious entrance to Washington, DC. Because that never happened, yet we built like it would. We've been trying to deal with that ever since, that our front door became our back door. So flash forward now with changes in the city and the neighborhoods, we recognize that access is important. But that gate is not a simple, just take the lock off and open it. It doesn't exist. It's been sealed over, closed in in the fence line. And as you saw in the presentation, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario is that the city has a responsibility outside of our gates that I have no control over. So this is really an opportunity for really getting the parties together and say, look, something's got to move first. And I would love to do it, but you'd be asking me to incur costs that I can't currently cover. And if it hasn't happened, what's going to happen first, right? So you see the issue with the Bladensburg road cut that even though we've planned for that, we can't even get funding for the gate there. So the, we incorporate it into the new master plan. Nothing that we're doing now would preclude that. But as you can see, it's a big, there's a lot of moving parts in the city, and I think NCPC has a great role in helping that. We are in communication with Congresswoman Eleanor Holmes' office regarding this issue and D dot. I have meetings planned, but again, it's trying to put those pieces together. And a lot of it has to happen outside our gate.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport, did you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Great. Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes, thank you, Jim. I just want to align myself with all the comments we've heard, and especially about the disappointment of the M Street gates. Those are important, but I also appreciate all the coordination that has taken place so far. And I appreciate the comments that were provided in the staff report by Mr. Wile.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Yeah, good afternoon. I really have nothing while I wait for the camera to come on. I have nothing else to add from what the other commissioners have stated so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to add my appreciation for the staff and the arboretum working closely and continuing to coordinate with the district and listening to the community as we work through this process. And just reflecting on how I think it's very important and very smart to move forward with the fence. A fence says a lot, and just making that one change, I think, especially in light of some of the comments from Commissioner Wright, that welcoming environment and showing that it's a place that people care for will be a great step in the right direction. So while a fence may seem to be a simple thing, I think it's going to have a positive impact. So glad to see that that's moving forward. So with that said, is there a motion to approve the preliminary and final site development plans?
So move.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, is there a second?
Second. Commissioner Wright.
Wright seconded. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. The motion was by Commissioner Dixon. The second was by Commissioner Wright. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Davenport?
Abstain.
Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Wile.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is 6A, an information presentation regarding the Metropolitan Washington Council, Washington Council of Governments' recent activities. Ms. Costa, would you please set us up for the presentation?
Thank you. I'm delighted to introduce Chuck Bean, the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, or COG, as we like to call it here. NCPC and COG have a very long history of partnership and collaboration to advance shared planning goals across the national capital region. Today, Mr. Bean will discuss a number of recent policy goals and priorities that regional leaders at COG have established to shape initiatives both by COG and by local jurisdictions in our region. These interconnected goals address land use, transportation, climate change, energy, all in the context of equity. I think this work is very exciting, and it presents opportunities for NCPC and other federal agencies to advance our own federal interests and administration priorities around these same topics. So this is intended to be a timely presentation. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Bean.
Welcome.
Chair White and commissioners, it's great to be here with you today. And Mr. Acosta and staff, it's been great partnering with you all over the years. So I'm looking forward to a robust conversation today. Chair White, I got about 30 slides. Sometimes I've done this in two hours. I may need to do it in 20 minutes. But I think Chair White, if you want to interrupt at any time to ask a clarifying question, I'm a pretty informal guy, so look forward to the dialogue either throughout or the dialogue after.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair White. So our Metropolitan Washington planning framework consists of four pillars, and I'm going to go through those in a moment. And they relate to housing and equity and transportation and our climate goals. They're rooted in our 2010 Region Forward vision for the region that happy to say that NCPC was a supporter of and a partner of in development of those, of that vision, founded on prosperity, accessibility, livability, sustainability. I remember that because the acronym is PALS. Well, in 2020, with a focus on equity, the board added a fifth pillar. So equity is intended to be woven through all of these plans. And Julie, if you click one more, and I'll explain how we're looking to go about, looking to go with that. So let me bring you back just the last two years of pretty furious work by the COG Board of Directors and to develop this framework. And next slide. 2019, we developed a set of housing targets. 2020, set a climate goal for the year 2030 for the region. Then working on high-capacity transit station areas, particularly how do we get the best out of the robust transit system that we have, and then equity emphasis areas. And these go against the backdrop of the last decade of, we've had some successes in the region, diversifying our regional economy, winning the biggest economic development competition probably in history with HQ2 coming to the region. Some wins on dedicated funding for Womata's capital system, something that has eluded this region for 40 years until it was realized a couple of years ago. Silver line, purple line, improvements in air quality and walkability. Also in this decade, other challenges emerged, and housing I would put at the top of the list. Climate change and responding to climate change and reducing the greenhouse gas emissions in the region. And our transportation, even while we made advances, we also brought in another 660,000 people to the region over the last decade. So that population growth is always an opportunity and a challenge. So that's against the backdrop of what the COG Board has focused on the last four, last two years. Now, let's lay these planning frameworks back on the original Region Forward diagram. So you see prosperity is epitomized by equity emphasis areas. And just a moment, I'll explain what that construct is. Accessibility, the high-capacity transit station areas. Sounds like transit, but it's really optimizing the land use to have access to that transit. Livability, how much housing do we need? How do we get there? And how do we get it in the right place? And then the climate goal. So the Region Forward overarching principles, we made concrete and we made specific. So if you're following along, when I get to numbers, it'll be 350 for equity emphasis areas. I'll explain that in a moment. High-capacity transit stations, 225. Housing targets, the key number is 75, 75,000. And the sustainability, the climate goal reduced by 50% by 2030. So actionable, deep dive on all these four areas. So let's start, go through each four, advancing shared prosperity. So while we had the word prosperity in Region Forward, when we leave an equity, the focus is on inclusive prosperity or shared prosperity. So that gets us to planning framework number one. Next slide, please. And the aspiration to elevate 350 equity emphasis areas. Now, each of these 350 are census tracts. Well, the region has about 1,200 census tracts in this footprint here, about 1,200 footprints in a 3,500-square-mile radius. We identified which of those 1,200 have concentrations of low-income communities or concentrations of communities of color or both. And it's these 300, these 350. So from a regional planning organization perspective, if you want to work on equity, you have to be working on these 350 census tracts. Next slide, please. In part, why these are significant is there's about 30% of the region's population are in these census tracts, although they only occupy about 10% of the region's landmass. So they're a little bit more dense. And these equity emphasis areas, these census tracts are in every major jurisdiction of the region. So Loudoun has some, Fairfax has some, Montgomery. But you see, there's a concentration in Maryland, 47% of these 350 are in Maryland. And when you look at the data, the concentration in Maryland is Prince George's. And in Prince George's, it's inside the Beltway. So the larger construct of region divided, this is that Brookings Seminole document from 25 years ago, is still important. It's still one of the strategic imperatives of the region. But here's a way to think about that really big challenge as 350 challenges. We need to work on the whole thing, but we need to have a plan for each of these 350 census tracts if we're going to be working on equity. So next slide, please. Now, we started looking at the census tracts from a transportation perspective and modeling, what's the access to the number of jobs from each census tract? And if a new transportation project were implemented, or several, or 100, what would be the impact? Does this increase more economic mobility and the number of jobs? We started with transportation. Meanwhile, another part of our organization, the chief health officers, were looking at social determinants of health. Well, it turns out they were looking at the same census tracts. So transportation, health. Now, we've made the commitment to look at all of our disciplines, all of our programmatic disciplines from this equity lens. What are the disparities between the 1,200 as a whole and these 350 as a whole? And we're now seeing that we're able to do this from an environmental lens, from a public safety lens, et cetera. We did this for roadway safety. Now, there are disparities in fatalities and injuries between these 350 census tracts, 1,200 as a whole. Statistically, yes, there are disparities. So then that leads the inquiry, why, how, is this engineering? Is this something else? So this is, I hope Chair White that this adequately explains how when we say we're weaving in equity throughout all that we do, the equity emphasis areas is our main point on this. Let's go to the second framework, and this is about advancing accessibility. And the next slide. On the ground right now in the region are 150 high-capacity transit station nodes, high-capacity transit station areas. Right now, that includes all the Womata stations, Mark, VRE, streetcar. Right now, that includes all the Womata stations, Mark, VRE, streetcar. By 2030, we'll add another seventy-five high-capacity transit station areas. And that includes the, really the new innovation for the next decade, which would be bus rapid transit, epitomized by Embark Richmond Highway in Fairfax County that I'll come back to in just a moment, and BRT systems in Montgomery County. So I think there are two acupuncture charts is the term that I often use. If you want to make a difference on equity, look at these 350 census tracts. If you want to make a biggest difference on land use, housing, and economic development, focus on these 225 nodes. Next slide, please. These 225 nodes just occupy just ten percent of the region's landmass. Let's see, could we go to the next slide? These 225 high-capacity transit station areas occupy ten percent of the region's landmass. But with just ten percent of the region's landmass, I think we went back. So let's go forward to more.
Sorry, just trying to get this to advance and it's.
That's all right. I'll just keep talking.
Okay.
Think Commissioners, hopefully you have that acupuncture chart, if you will, of the 225 high-capacity transit station areas in your mind. Saying that these areas occupy just ten percent of the region's landmass, yet they'll account for forty-two percent of the region's new household growth. And they'll account for fifty-five percent of the new job growth in the region. So ten percent of the region's landmass, the preponderance of household growth and majority of new job growth in these nodes. So the next slide is a table. And Chair White, I should have said at the beginning, yes, we'll send out the slide deck to the Commissioners. Happy to do that. And we'll follow up with Julia to provide links to the COG website that you all can look at the equity emphasis areas, robust tool that we have, HCT maps, et cetera. But here's where the high-capacity transit stations are, preponderance in the district with the density of metro stations, for example, but also Montgomery County, Prince George's County. And part of their vision here is that we will optimize not just the Womata stations, but work to better leverage the land use around Mark and VRE and evolve from a commuter rail system to a regional rail system. This might be epitomized by the Woodbridge Station, two million square feet of development, going to go around that, down that station. So next slide, this is kind of conceptual term we often use to think about optimizing the land use around these high-capacity transit stations is TOC or Transit Oriented Communities. So we no longer say TOD, we say TOC for communities, because development is not the end goal of this planning. Communities, community building is the end goal of this planning. And while TOD, a hallmark has been mixed use, that residential and commercial can coexist in a same hub, we need to add something else, and that's mixed income. It's a struggle because the land use appreciates around these nodes. But TOC means mixed use and mixed income, and that refers to housing. So next slide, a little visual around what is optimizing around high-capacity transit station means. Look at this bullseye, if you will. The red is that half-mile, that's traditionally associated with TOD. But we're looking beyond the half-mile to a mile, to two miles. We need to optimize the land use all around these high-capacity transit station nodes. So Chair White and Commissioners, when I, when I think of these 225, I think we're thinking of 225 bullseyes around the region. And as it relates to your work, optimizing federal facilities, federal plans, means how do we optimize plans around the purple line, which connects so many federal facilities? The density of a high-capacity transit nodes in the region. So there's walkability, bikeability. As we go out in the next decade, autonomous shuttle going from surrounding community to the high-capacity transit node. Next slide. Of course, all of this works together. And you'll find on our website maps that document the high-capacity transit nodes and the equity emphasis areas as we think about maximizing the opportunity, such as around National Landing where HQ2 is, but maximizing the opportunity of the equity emphasis areas that might be a couple of miles away to take advantage of that opportunity. Hundred and sixty-eight of these high-capacity transit station areas overlap with an equity emphasis area. If I were to ask, well, where ought we start? It might start with the overlap of these two as we think about the best opportunities, best bang for the buck. And that might be the blue line corridor in Prince George's County, several other examples. Let's go to the last of the four, advancing livability is the next slide. And that pertains to a focus on housing. And why housing? The outgoing Director of Economic Development from Virginia, and this is a super smart guy. He was the brainiac around the HQ2 proposal to Amazon. So this is a true economic development guy, recruiting companies, et cetera. What he says going out is Northern Virginia's main constraint on economic development is housing. So this is not a housing advocate. This is economic development guy. Housing is the main constraint. All right. So I'm going to share our perspective, our analysis. Well, how much more housing is needed? So the blue line is what we forecast, as we do forecasts for jobs, households, and population for the region. The orange line above it is the housing that we actually need. And can you click? And the delta between the 245,000 that we forecast over the next decade, click, is about seventy-five thousand. So about seventy-five thousand more than is forecast for a total of 320,000 is needed in the, in the region. But it's important, not just the gross number. If we go to the next slide, important about housing are three things. The next slide will show a orange bar, seventy-five thousand units beyond forecast is what's needed. But not only the right amount, this housing, to meet many of our regional goals, has to be in the right place. And the right place here is defined as proximate to transit. So we think about optimizing land use around high-capacity transit, these 225 nodes. That's where more housing affordability needs to happen, not just low income, but median, medium-income household. So that comes to our third target. Of all the new housing that's developed, as we look at the economic base, the employee base, 3.2, 3.2 million jobs right now by 2030, another 400,000, so 3.6 million jobs. Some of those very high-paying, some not so high-paying, but we got to accommodate those jobs. For example, people are going to be having two-hour commutes, and we want to figure out ways to get the thirty-minute commute, forty-minute commute, not from an economic, not just from an economic development perspective, but also to achieve some of our climate goals. So I'm gonna go to the next slide, please. Here's just a little bit of a drill down. I just brought a one-minute case study here. This is Fairfax County. And you see on the left of your screen, the nodes, those are the high-capacity transit nodes in Fairfax. And you see on the right-hand part going down Route One, Richmond Highway, a lot of maroon or red-colored dots. That's Embark Richmond Highway. That's the BRT plan, the 750 million, billion-dollar plan for Route One. You see on the right-hand side, these are the equity emphasis areas, the census tracts. And what's remarkable is you see the census tracts in a row along Route One in kind of the north, northern part of Route One. So Fairfax is working on two things right now, transit and equity and economic opportunity. So we weave in the example of Fort Belvoir here. And the biggest employer in Fairfax County is not in Tyson's, as much of a juggernaut Tyson's is or Reston. The biggest employer in Fairfax County is Fort Belvoir. As you think about housing for Fort Belvoir, or housing for the jobs at Fort Belvoir, it turns out that many more of the housing that's needed is outside the base, multiples. Somebody even told me yesterday, it's more like a ratio of jobs on the base compared to housing on the base, like fifty or even a hundred to one. So even if that number is not quite right, much more of the housing is off-base. And that's why this transportation plan, this BRT plan, going from Alexandria, right down Richmond Highway to Fort Belvoir, is just so important for the county, but it's also going to be so important for the, for the base. And I think you all, if you're helping the facilities, federal facilities with their housing plans, I think all these forts are going to have that situation where more of the jobs, more of the people that have the jobs on base are living off the base. It's just so important to be working with the local jurisdictions on these housing plans. So next slide, please. I'm moving into the fourth of four, and this is our climate goals. And next, just as a little bit of background, as part of Region Forward, we set some greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. Part of one of it was a reduction in the region by 2020. Several of our jurisdictions will reach that twenty percent reduction by 2020. But now we're looking forward to 2030. In 2020, the COG Board set a fifty percent greenhouse gas emission reduction goal for the region. We were elated when President Biden came in and set that same target of fifty percent reduction by 2030 for the nation. Next slide, please. And as all of you know, this needs to be a multi-sectoral approach. There needs to be bend the curve on clean energy, on the built environment, and on transportation. We exceeded our goals in the region on developing renewables. But some of our challenges also relate to adding 660,000 people and the demand that puts on transportation, the demand that puts on commercial space. We are actively analyzing scenario planning, what would it take to get to those goals? Julia sits on TPB, and she can share with you some of that analysis that we're doing with CADMISS and ICF. So wrapping up a handful of slides, just putting some of these in action. And we'll send you links to our 2030 Climate and Energy Plan. And we're doing several climate and energy plans for our member jurisdictions, our member jurisdictions, Contract COG or Contract COG, along with a consultant. So Fairfax and Prince George's, Charles County example. Sometimes it's plans for government operations, sometimes it's a community-wide, happy to dialogue with you more about that. But next slide, please. So our focus in 2022 is accelerating action in all these domains. So I'll briefly talk about work on racial equity, on housing, on improving access to transit, climate, and energy, and make sure that you have some handles on names of our plans so that you'll be able to find them on our, on our website. Next, please. On advancing racial equity, I think I'll just give one note. The third bullet called Regional Learning Cohort, COG has partnered with a national organization called GEAR, Government Alliance for Race and Equity. And we developed a cohort of eleven jurisdictions that voluntarily participated with about ten people from each of their jurisdictions to learn about racial equity as it's applied to government, government policy. Year-long program, so it's a total of about 110 people from eleven jurisdictions. We've completed one cohort, year-long cohort. We're in the midst of the second cohort that'll go on for a year. My hope is that we'll be able to start a third cohort of a hundred-some people, maybe in the fall. And my hope is that we could open this up, not just to our member jurisdictions, but to our key governmental, quasi-governmental partners. So if that's of interest to NCPC, we'd love to talk with you about that. Next slide, please. We have some grant programs that accelerate best practices. One that we're going to announce next week at our board meeting is funding to promote housing affordability plans. So in the housing perspective, it's about seventy-five thousand dollar feasibility studies, design work, et cetera. So more information will be announced on that next week. Next. And climate and energy action planning. I mentioned that we're engaged at the regional level. We do the greenhouse gas inventories for the region, for our member jurisdictions, and then we do plans with our members. Next slide, please. EV charging and EV charging infrastructure might be something that if NCPC is interested, that we could follow up on. It seems like an amazing opportunity that needs to be seized this year. The opportunity for economies of scale in planning, in implementation, economies of scale, particularly in procurement. So as the president has given a mandate to electrify the federal fleet, we're in weekly dialogue with our, with our members and the contracts that Montgomery has to electrify its school bus system. So this might be a unique opportunity for key federal partners from EPA, DOE, USDOT. Where were the point people from the federal government working with NCPC? And we would bring Fairfax and Montgomery, the district, and others to the table to find synergies, not only develop a vision, but develop an action plan to accelerate charging infrastructure for the region. Next one is National Capital Trail Network. So building bicycle lanes is not just a nice amenity. Hopefully, you've seen it's woven into our transportation plans and our optimizing land use around high-capacity transit that bikes and more and more in the future, electric bicycles can be part of our transportation planning. Needs to be looked at through an equity perspective. So how do we include equity emphasis areas in the future bike trails? Status now, there's a vision for eight hundred miles of bike lanes throughout the region. Plan is on our, on our website. Good news is almost half has been built. That means about another half needs to be built. And I think partnership with National Park Service, NCPC can be a big pull for the next decade. Hopefully, we have the wind at our back on a number of these things in the next, next couple of years. So slide thirty-two. And of course, that's the bipartisan infrastructure bill, about twenty billion dollars is a ballpark figure. Three billion in the district, seven billion in Maryland, nine billion in Virginia. So we'll be working in great detail through the Transportation Planning Board, Transportation Infrastructure. We convene all the water utilities in the regions, so water infrastructure. And another example, so we'd be happy to work with NCPC and stay in dialogue in order to take advantage of these opportunities for our region and our shared interest of making this, this area all it can be. So Chair White, I went on just a few more minutes than I planned, but I'm, I'm at your disposal till midnight if we can talk, talk about any of it. So I'll turn it to you. And I think, Julia, unless Chair White wants to refer to any of the slides, I'm just as happy taking the slide deck down.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. And you did it in very short order, given the complexities of the issues and how you're putting them all together. And it's, it's really great to hear such a holistic approach and also a refreshing look at the language that we use in how we describe what we're trying to achieve. So I really appreciated that. And I have a couple of questions and comments, but I want to open it up to the Commissioners first. If that's all right, if anyone has any general questions of Mr. Bean. Or we'll just, you know, we'll go round robin and and why don't we start it off with Commissioner Dixon?
I'm willing to go around robin, but I did put my camera on. First of all, there's always with me an excitement to hear presentations from cog. Since I chaired it for multiple years when I was younger and always felt that the wisdom was great. We were talking the talk always, but we try to get jurisdictions to walk the walk. That's the problem. I can, I can, I got a lot of things on my list and I don't want to take up too much time. But the one thing, you know, we always used to talk about DC being the hole in the doughnut within the region, which is the whole concept. But we've, I think we've gotten past that. But I think there's so many holes in the doughnut, which are areas like R. I call Anacostia River East R and maybe even PG County areas that are challenged. And how we can take on those and deal with them and get them in the mix is important. This, the population is not always able to be as engaged because of time constraints as other areas. So that makes it much more challenging. I also feel that we just had a project come before us and the federal government passed on being able to put solar panels on a building because they couldn't afford it. I couldn't afford to put them on my house either, but I did. And DC has a very aggressive program. Virginia does not, Maryland does not, as far as I know. I'm not, haven't felt the hand of the heavy electrical lobby, but I'm sure it's being felt. And I hope we can get past that because I saw your solar panels, I got excited. NCPC knows that I get excited about solar panels. It's like wine coming from the sky and nobody's catching it to drink it. But but the point, the point I make here is that we got to find ways to get the these governments, these state governments to do like DC has done, encourage this and offer a benefit to get these panels in. It may not be that the panels will help the building it's on, but if it can be put back in the grid, it can do a lot to help others. I also feel like there is a population drop going on, as you know, in DC, which surprised me, not didn't surprise me. It's been coming. Are you factoring that in? Are they leaving the region or they just leaving DC? And now I'm at a question after having made a little statement. And are you aware of this?
Yeah, I I understand that, what is it, 20 some thousand?
Per month.
Yeah. From our perspective, they're not net leaving the region. So we grew in the last census by 660,000 people. That's about 10% growth. It's not as fast as, I think Chair White, you're in Houston, not as fast as Houston or some of the sunshine cities, but that's a stronger growth than most northern metropolitan areas. Slight decline in in the district, so that that probably has a whole conversation to it. But I think once I started that, it's going to take me 15.
All these things require a lot of time, as you, we've already commented, you did wonderfully well to get what you presented so quickly when there's so much involved here. I would be curious, I've always wondered whether or not we couldn't do more focused look at the part of R, Anacostia River East and PG, those areas. And because they don't always match up statistically to the regional statistics. And that sends a message which is not always as clear and useful to get the support we need from federal and other things, because we get sort of lost in the shuffle as a as a bright day when we really in shade in our some areas. I'm I'm wanting, I'm making, I'm making some comments, maybe you can, I'm not really going to get, try to get you to answer because maybe some of them require more than can be done now. But I'm also always kind of laugh when I see these, I have an electric, electric car myself. At least it's a hybrid electric. And I'm 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 of the opinion that, you know, that electric to charge those vehicles has to come from someplace. And if it's still fossil fuel providing electricity, you haven't really gained much. Except for the the exhaustion and, you know, keeping the pollution down. So you got to find ways to be able to generate the non-fossil fuel, going back to solar, whatever we do to deal with that. So it's not just, you know, another way to burn more gas, more electric, I should say. I got a lot of things written down. I don't want to go on because my colleagues deserve more time or some time. But again, I'm excited by hearing what you're doing, always am. And as I said, we just have to not only let you guys talk the talk and give the numbers, but we got to get these jurisdictions to walk the walk and focus on areas where they need to make a big difference. And I'm not sure we always are able to direct it the way we should be able to. Thank you for what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Dixon. As the former Chair of Cog, it was so appropriate to start with you. Mr. Bean, did you want to say something else? I'm sorry.
No, I'll I'll take my cue from Mr. Dixon and we'll have another conversation when we give others. But I want to come back to opportunities in Prince George's and opportunities to do climate action planning. Even five years ago, Mr. Dixon, with some of these jurisdictions, I would have thought it's science fiction. We'd be doing this climate action planning with them. But now, now, now it's happening. So it's really these next couple of years, we have some big opportunities. But I'll I'll stop there and we can have another go around in a few minutes.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Cash.
Sorry about that. No questions, but I just want to thank Cog for all the work that does. And I mean, it's a it's a really great partnership. And I think regionalism is is really important in these items that you touch on. I think are are going to move the region forward together. So I'm just thank you for for all of Cog's work.
Thank you. We had a recent presentation on the ecosystem for EV infrastructure that I think the rest of the region was, oh, that's what a master plan for EV charging looks like. So appreciate appreciate our partnership.
Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I just wanted to echo Commissioner Dixon, really interested in in hearing any additional details about the electrification space in particular. But appreciate the presentation.
I I think let me try to say the the opportunity is technically it's possible to do a detailed master plan. We model 17 million trips that happen, 17 million trips that happen every day. This is, that's a number pre-pandemic. So we know where we know where the trips are happening, whether it's in a car or it's a bike or it's a it's a bus. So technically, and we can then know within each jurisdiction, what's the need? We can work with that jurisdiction, where could that possibly be? The funding is not there to do that kind of master plan. But if the federal government's going to make some big leaps on electrifying the the federal fleet, that would be the train, I think, that would we're thinking about NIH, other, you know, major facilities in Montgomery County. Montgomery County is already there, so let's link those link those together. So I think that's, if there's one opportunity on this year, that would be, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davenport.
Hi Chuck, as as someone who was also, who works for someone who was a former Chair of Cog and whose whose biggest award in his office is for the work he did at Cog. Very familiar with the good work that that you all do. And I I wanted to drill down on an issue that I know Congressman Connolly worked with, worked on a lot at Cog and is Chairman of Fairfax County. And that was your housing presentation. And just get some maybe orders of scale. When you talk about certain trajectories for, you know, needing 75,000 more units and a certain percentage of those needing to be near transit and a certain percentage of those needing to be targeted toward moderate to low income households. What is the, what is the scale of the trajectory change that we're we're talking here? Like, do local housing programs need to double, triple, quadruple in size? What is the, I guess, the the amount of action that's going to be required for the current trajectory at the local level?
Thank you. Just a level set in the region right now, there are about 2.1 million housing units on the ground. So when we model the number of jobs going out the next year, the population to fill those jobs and the households needed for that population, there's about an additional 320,000 needed on top of that 2.1 million. When we look at what are the forecasts, looking at the land use, the land plans, housing plans, about 245,000 is what we project. So I think Colin, the the trajectory needs to change from 245, needs to change to 320. So an additional 75,000 on top of the 240. So I think then that can be brought down to each jurisdiction, depending on what's its population base, its forecast, its job, job growth. And then there can be that same level of increase by each jurisdiction. Now, some jurisdictions in the region have adopted very specific housing targets that are completely aligned with that trajectory you were referring to. So Alexandria's housing plan, Alexandria's targets mirror that trajectory. Prince George's County Executive Angela Alsabrooks, I think it's an additional 26,000 housing units in Prince George's County. So Prince George's targets echo that. Mayor Bowser, the additional housing that's that's in her plan. She identified a 2025 target, but it's really that line that she's identified is is the line we need by by 2030. So I I think that's the one part of the answer, Colin, and that is the overall amount. The next important thing is where all that additional housing really can't go in Western Loudoun or Southern Charles or Northern Frederick County. Otherwise, we're not getting the quality of life goals. We're not getting the climate goals. It needs to be closer to the jobs. So transit oriented, development transit oriented communities. So 75% of all of the numbers that I just said, 75% of all that housing needs to be in that acupuncture chart that I talked about, the high capacity transit station areas. Then of all that housing, 75% needs to be priced at a point that's accessible to low or moderate income families. So I think if I've said too much, Sean, Colin, I remember it as 75, 75, 75, 75,000 more than we forecast, 75% near high capacity transit or activity centers. And 75% of that housing needs to be accessible to low and moderate income people in order to have a high performing economy and shared prosperity.
That's a great formula to remember. Thank you, Commissioner Davenport. Any further questions or comments?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes, thank you. And that was a very, very good presentation. The DCL supply has been working very closely with Cog and supports all the work that you that we've done together and through both Cog and the Transportation Planning Board and are very happy to see it all discussed under one envelope. As you know, the, as you were pointing out, the mayor has put a great emphasis on housing and pushing all of her agencies to remove any kind of barriers and moving housing forward. So just wanted to thank you for your work.
Thank you, Jennifer. I I would say that special shout outs to Andrew Trueblood, Polly Donaldson, Chair for now, now have moved on from the district. But they were so active in Cog. Andrew Chair Planning, we have a Planning Directors Committee, Polly chairing the Housing Directors Committee. They were right at the hub when the Cog Board developed the housing targets back in 2019. And just a little anecdote about Mayor Bowser and Senior Advisor Beverly Perry. We read a Cog retreat in 2018. This is at the time that the the region had made the shortlist for HQ2 three times out of 20. So no other region was like that. We thought, oh, this really could happen. So we brought in the former Director of Transportation from Seattle. What are the transportation impacts of an Amazon? And it turned out that he spoke at least 50% of the time, not on transportation, but on housing. The transportation, housing, you got to have the housing proximate to the jobs. Otherwise, you're going to have all kinds of transportation problems. So that's, it was from then that we really began, whoa, we need to set these targets. And I think Beverly Perry Perry was on the on the phone to Mayor Bowser that day. We need, we need to get on this. And boy, Mayor Bowser is just really epitomized rolling this out, the number in the right place and in all the word, all the words. So thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
No, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. Some good things to think about there. And I really appreciate the comments from the other commissioners who continue to try to educate me. So thanks for coming by today.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
Sure. Thank you all so very much. Very glad to receive this presentation. Wasn't sure what we were going to see when we started up. Because I sometimes, planning on the scale can just be really mind-boggling. But I did a really good job explaining it and explaining it in very direct terms. So I really do appreciate not just the content, but actually the the delivery. Just to add on a couple of things. You know, one of the things I think that we are all going to be grappling with, that we're not already grappling with right now, is return to work scenarios. Since we've all been working from home for so long and and what that will mean for major employers, certainly within my office, I expect that office participation, in-office participation is going to drop substantially. I mean, more than 50%. Will not be, I mean, our our office occupancy is going to probably drop by more than 50% just within my division. Some of the other ones won't, and certainly in the parks where we have to have people on site, we're going to have people on site. But I expect that there's going to be really substantial changes and and that will make certain aspects of of this planning easier in terms of reduced trips and perhaps less transportation infrastructure needed. But it also complicates other things, right? How do you, how do you make sure that you have the kind of vibrancy of livelihood and and so on in in major areas like, you know, downtown DC, which is suffering from a of a lack of people, right? The lack of people reflects many businesses. And so all those are things that I'm sure you're starting to think about as we get out of our current mode, which probably comes soon. I I do want to emphasize one aspect of NCPC's work in relationship to all of the things that you described. And that is this ongoing issue of where federal workplaces are cited. And it doesn't happen that often, right? There aren't that many new major facilities that are being cited in this area. But it does happen. We have encountered that in my my time on the on the commission. And it it's clear that it's it's a major issue. You know, there've been, there've been a few very stark examples of not really great decision-making about locating of facilities. I will go into great detail about the DHS headquarters, but I know Ms. Wright expects me to mention it. The, that's just one, but there are other more recent ones, such as the Bureau of Engraving and Printing and their decision to locate where they have, which, I mean, has benefits and has disadvantages as well. But it really, you know, it's, they basically have created a a or establishing themselves at a location that requires a very large portion of their workers to commute by car. And and it is one of those spaces where people actually have to be there all the time. So I don't expect they're going to be significantly affected by work from home strategies and things like that. And I think that's one area where NCPC has not been able to do as much with federal agencies as they would like. And so I really am hopeful that some of the thinking that you're doing, some of the planning that you're doing. can lead into what NCPC staff are, I think, trying to do much more aggressively with federal agencies when it comes to the location of federal facilities. Because I think it's not just about where people are located, but it's also where the businesses and of course, our businesses is federal government. And I would mention one of the, well, a couple of things. What is that? In all of this planning, the thing that I will always want to speak up for is the preservation of open space and parkland. And new developments require not only the development of buildings and infrastructure and accommodation for vehicles and things like that, but they require the development of of parkland to be born. And this is something that is not really written, it's not ingrained in our planning thinking in many areas. Some areas it is, but I think that it is something that is vitally important. If we're going to have more people in this area, it's certainly terrific that we are trying to concentrate those people in the transit oriented communities. But I think it's equally important to make sure that we are taking steps to preserve open space and to establish parkland in proximity to these transit oriented communities, right? And what, everybody wants to be able to go to the nearby park. You know, we want to be able to walk our dogs and ride our bikes and recreate. So I think that's a really important component of that. But of course, that ties into the trail network, which we are, you know, thrilled to be working with you on and continuing to work with COG on as we develop a more expansive trail network. And the last thing I'll say is just sort of underscore what Fisher Dixon mentioned with regard to solar and the importance of emphasizing that. It really is remarkable. I mean, from, from my window, I can see green solar installations on houses on, you know, on Capitol Hill. And historic district, right? We can still, we can still have them. And there are so many flat roofs in Washington that are begging for solar power installation. And the city has such great install, sorry, incentives for it. And it's way ahead, but still has much more potential. And I can't imagine, you know, areas where it's not incentivized the way it is in the district, how much more could be done if it were. So I think that's a critically important thing. I know that, you know, it saves me half my electric bill every month. It's paid for itself a couple of times over now in the summer areas that I've had on my house. So it's a vital link. So I did a lot of talking. I'm not really looking for a lot of response. I saw a lot of nodding, but if you want to say something, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Everything you said is so interesting that I can't resist. Let me just start from the top. Appreciate your observation of, you know, looking at these big problems, you know, we're the sixth largest metro in the country. So the, the scale of this is big. But I think we're trying to look at these in bite size as well as look at the whole. So yes, optimize national landing in Arlington. But those census tracts around Arlington on Columbia Pike. I was just so thrilled a couple of weeks ago when Amazon put in 150 million and Arlington put 150 million to preserve an affordable housing community on Columbia Pike. It's not in HQ2, but that's the kind of thing, you know, we need. And going back to Commissioner Dixon, you know, that's kind of thinking we need for the Blue Line Corridor going out from the district out to Largo. Return to office, we could spend days on this. This is probably the main thing that I am part of a group of major metro COGS. Commissioner White, one of my best pals, is the Director of the Houston COG. So we're constantly asking, what, what's your modeling looking like? What's it gonna, how's it gonna change? Just talking here, it's not a statement. It, the scenario that you've outlined, Mr. May, where somebody instead of commuting in five days a week, might be coming in two days a week. That might decrease the gravity of that center. But I don't think we'd want the outcome of sprawl. We don't want that person three hours away. But if we can think new, new ways about mark and VRE, then create communities out of these 225 nodes and think about the, you know, we're not calling it yet, but we're very interested what Paris calls the 15 minute city or 15 minute community. How do we do that to these 225 places? I think that has something to do with the implications of this potentially different gravity that the different return to office might look like. On the, on the sighting, love to have a longer conversation. What's the saying that to a carpenter, everything looks like a nail? So I, to your question, sighting criteria. From our perspective, the four elements of the planning framework also apply. So near high capacity transit, got to optimize that land use. So what does that look like? You know, that, that block shed around that station should look like a beautiful full moon. 10 minutes from half mile all around it. A lot of our block sheds look like a crescent moon because there's a highway or there's some impediment there. So we got to optimize all those places. And I would think, you know, an analysis of the high capacity transit station areas with all of the facilities that you're looking at or potentially looking at, what's the land use optimization to get to that? Whether it's WAMADA, Mark, VRE, BRT, equity emphasis areas, because all federal employees are, you know, not at that six digit level, but might be at the 50,000 position. So what's their commute shed look like? And how do we think about equity emphasis areas in that, on being able to get to that, you know? The highest proportion of the work, if we look at the, all of our jurisdictions and their proportion of federal workers out of the whole workforce, the largest is Charles County. So when we had the federal shutdown, we looked at what could be the impact on relatively low income workers. It was the largest percentage of their workforce are federal workers. There's a lot of commuting from, from Charles County of federal workers, you know. And then climate and housing, beautiful kind of, this is a planner climate. Beautiful, you know, cone, you know, absent, apart from the district's height limits, out of these 225 places, what will the market bear in that half mile around all these places? And then how do we taper into the mile and the mile and a half? I think all that has something to do with optimizing the places where these sightings might, might go. So Chair White, Mr. May, happy to continue this at a, continue this at another time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
I am here. I just want to, I'm cognizant of the time. I don't want to take, I don't want to take up much at all. I, I started thinking, when I was thinking about this and, and listening to all that's been said. One of the things that strikes me is, I'm trying to figure out how the best way to put it. Kind of the, the generational shift that is happening here. And now I may be on the, how do I say it, older side of the equation that I'm talking about. But, you know, I, not very long ago, like I'm talking about in the last five years, was I working in a place where there were still the kind of attitudes about what we used to call, I'll use the polite term for it, B and Cs, bottoms and chairs. Workplaces where you, you know, now it seems, you know, almost archaic with the things that are happening of different perspectives, but shifting how you get into some of the more traditional, like in governments, attitudes about what is, how do you, how do you measure productivity when you don't have a bottom in the chair in front of you? And anyway, it just occurred to me, the last place I worked, place I worked, I'm now retired, where I worked for somebody that was, you know, really intolerant of the idea of not being where you could be summoned into a meeting, where you could be called on easily. And I, I'm fumbling a little bit, but I'm thinking about, about different, I'll have to think about it more and maybe be more articulate about it. But thinking about ways in which we influence, you know, managerial perspectives and workplaces to accommodate some of the things that we're talking about. I have more to say, but I'm going to give my time to the next person on the list. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, and it shows there's just so much rich conversation here. Mr. Bean, you, you wanted to say something in response to Commissioner Argo, please?
Three, three quick things. First, first is, I think competition for a great workforce is going to have to be met with this kind of flexibility. The 20 somethings, 30 somethings, you know, they're going to need that flexibility. So, you know, as employers, we're just going to need to get ready for it. Our, my own teloar regime, rather than everybody coming back, when they come back, we changed it. And it's going to be two or three days per week when we come back. And we have some more loopholes for flexibility because some of our most productive folks, I don't, I hope this sounds okay, most productive folks are like a 30 something mom. Boy, we need to keep, we need to keep her, sorry if that's a gender's not right, but we need to keep those young parents and we need to show some flexibility. So I think that's going to be across government. Terms of generational, like who are we and who are we becoming? Going back to Mr. Dixon's points about growth, we've grown in the region, of course, you know, babies. But we've grown primarily from foreign migration, from domestic migration. So we're becoming more diverse. In the seventies, I think we were like 4% foreign born. Now we're like 20%, 27% of the region, foreign, foreign borns. We're going to need to keep, keep adapting. And one other thing I meant to say to Mr. May, we're thinking about RT, return to office and what does it mean for downtown DC? We're going to hear C word a lot, conversion, conversion of office to residential. And that could be a nice opportunity. I think the district within the last 20 years sought to be an 18 hour place, places, meaning live and work. It could be even more than that. So there's challenges, but through commercial residential conversion done thoughtfully, this could be big, big opportunities for variable, very livable places.
Thank you. I understand Commissioner Wright had to leave the meeting. So I think that concludes our round robin. If anyone has any additional questions, please let me know. I would, myself, I would like to really echo what Commissioner May spoke about in terms of public space and parkland. And that really struck me, particularly in your four pillars and on slide 14, where you have the transit oriented communities. As I mentioned before, I think that's a really smart change from transit oriented development and, and in a former life, having worked on a set of guidelines for transit oriented development. I think the word development has come to mean many negative things to communities in many ways. So I think that's a really powerful move, a simple one, but very powerful. And in thinking about public space and parkland and transportation, when you use the word transit, having worked at the Chicago Transit Authority for many years, for me, it conjures up public transit or public transport. And I, and I saw you noted pedestrian and bicycle projects underneath that. But I think if you could call out a little bit more, that when you say transportation, it's, it's all of it. It's public transit, it's cars, it's active transportation. So public space and greenways in particular, you know, that system is as powerful, maybe not carry or move as many people, but it is a significant growing trend. And at the end, you shared the map about trails. That, that might be brought to the forefront a little bit more because those systems are really important complements to not just the highways, but the public transit lines and so forth. And I, I know you understand that and just calling it out more, I think, would be really helpful because that public realm and the ability to walk to public transit is as important as the public transit itself. So I loved the statistics that you shared about the goals for how many miles of trail. And we know the DC region is leading in many ways around the country on parks and open space and access to, to parks, open space and development of trails. And I think about the Urban Land Institute study, it was in 2016, they released trail oriented development. And, you know, Mr. McMahon went around the country and came here, in fact. And we, we use that report a lot to advance the work that we're trying to do in, in Greenway. So the power behind that and the public space, not just for transportation, but also climate, economic development, health indicators. So, you know, I just really want to echo what Commissioner May was saying, that that's a really powerful element to your plan that is important from an equity perspective across the board. But that said, I just think you can tell by everyone staying on for this call. This is a really important conversation and, you know, you bring an energy and passion to this that we really appreciate. And, and again, the way you convey the information is also really helpful because of there's so much to be considered. So we really appreciate that. And the, the shared goals and the tools and you're champion, championing, I guess, being a champion of regional thinking. And then, you know, talking with your colleagues around the country, keep that up. We, we really appreciate it. And as the at-large member, that means a lot to me. But if there, if there's anything in conclusion you would like to say, maybe we'll schedule regular conversations with you throughout the year. So we don't save it all up for one time. But if you have any concluding remarks, we'd love to hear them.
Yes, of course. I'd be happy to have regular conversations. And we have about 122 staff that are subject matter experts in all these areas. So staff to staff or bringing any, any of them in and working on some of these joint projects, we'd be, we'd be happy to. Appreciate your constructive feedback on the park access. And one, one way, newer way that we might, we COG might, might be thinking about that is I mentioned that these 350 census tracts allows us this analytical frame to look at what's different between these 350 and the 1200 as a whole. I think it was only about nine months ago that someone brought to me, you know, Chuck, we can look at the tree canopy. Look at disparity amongst all these census tracts. Had not thought of that. And tree canopy, as you know, not just as an aesthetic, but cooling the neighborhood and values to the community. So statistically, we can look at what are the differences? And then it's in those stark terms, what should be done about it? I think similarly, what's the access to park, what's access to open space between these 350 census tracts and the 1200 as a whole? And any jurisdiction could do the same, same analysis, just from an equity perspective. Who has access to these open spaces? From an economic development perspective, quality of life, of course, as we think about the bullseye, think about the opportunity for that density of people, also that opportunity for that open space. So you've given me some good things to think about in that regard. Or credit also Mr. May, give me some good things to think about in that regard.
Well, thank you. And, and no, it's so interesting, particularly in this time of COVID, that I think people's heightened awareness of the value of parks and open space is a place to be healthy and seek rest. But it's, it's a time to elevate that role of parks as a building block of healthy communities. So I am a park advocate, also transit and comprehensive planning. So this is all music to my ears. So thank you. And we'll continue this dialogue. Commissioner May, did you have other comments you'd like to make? I know we could go on about this for the rest of the day. Hope you're on, there you go.
Yeah, very quickly, because I got, you know, we have, we have an audience beyond the people who are on the call here. And one of my colleagues at another agency just pinged me and told, and suggested that we not forget about water as a means of transportation.
Absolutely.
Sure, that's your thinking, but maybe it needs to be, you know, called out.
Yep, blueways and greenways.
Of course, you know, be very careful, because we control almost all the shoreline. So it's too much, but.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. May. And to your colleague, you know, it was President Johnson that called the Potomac River a national disgrace. And it was through a lot of collaboration, some federal regulation, that we're able to, in the region, create the Blue Plains Waste Water Treatment Facility, which is the second-largest in the world. And we help kind of as a referee, the budgeting and what, what's the amount of input? But that's a collaboration between the district and Fairfax, Montgomery and Prince George's. And not just water for water's sake, but look at the economic development potential that's just bloomed in the last 10 years. National Harbor would not have been possible, the wharf would not have been possible, revitalization of Tom Alexander and the water taxis that are connecting all of them. Think about the cleanup of Anacostia. It seemed like science fiction to talk about that with Mayor Williams and others maybe 15 years ago. And, you know, so much progress with more to do in such, such, such little time. So thank you. And I know Mr. Dixon has his hand raised, and I also wanted to, on our previous conversation, I, I'm looking forward to go attending the Prince George's County Council Retreat in about a month. It'll be a similar presentation, Prince George's version of this. So I think, Mr. Dixon, as you talk about areas of particular opportunity, you know, Prince George's is at the top of our list.
Yeah, I just wanted to make very quick points, because we could go on forever. But moving from the macro, that is, the regional macro, to the micro, that's the neighborhood area. One of the things I tried to do many years ago was to make PG County and our Anacostia River East a single hub zone, enterprise zone, because of the, how they shared space and, and location. I'm not sure whether that will ever come back in play. I also wanted to point out that we have an abundance of federal presence in, in our Anacostia River East. And the, and there's a lot of new housing coming there. And what we obviously wanting to true is to keep some of our current residents. I don't want to use the word gentrification. I think it's an economic phenomenon that's gonna happen. But we don't want it to go overboard, and we want to find ways to get the local residents tied into some of these job opportunities. They don't have to ride buses, they can walk. And they're right, can walk through the park to get to these places. But we got a lot of federal presence there, and we are not really into that mix very much. So that's kind of, I want to make one last thank you to COG. Many years ago, when DC government, many governments, were doing their budget by hand. And when you wanted to make a change, you went back for a couple hours or days to change the statistics. We asked, I asked COG, because I was with COG in his press chair, and I said, can you let us use your spreadsheet system that you use, Simple Excel, right? To be able to put our budget on? And they did that for us. And that was the first time that, that we had an automated budget. We got so good at the council with it that the mayor, Mayor Barry, said, what are you guys doing? Can we get the same thing? I said, absolutely. Talk to COG. Thank you, COG, for that, many years ago.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dixon. I think our long-term staff members, now that have retired the last few years, remember, oh, golly, what's the, what's the term about the, the paper cards that you flow through and have a mainframe computer and do our model for the region and then helping jurisdictions with that? If, if I could, just on the comment, particularly east of the river, it connects back to our previous conversation about helping federal facilities, helping military facilities. We are involved, the acronym is MIRR, and I forget what it all stands for, but the important word is resiliency. And it's resiliency of these federal facilities, these military bases beyond their actual base. But how can they be more resilient as they work within the community? So one aspect of resiliency is its, its personnel being able to get there. So that's, that's transportation planning. In, in the district, Mr. Dixon, COG is working with Joint Base Anacostia-Bolling, also with McNair and, and a, and a couple of others. So that might be another point of intersection and learning between NCPC and COG.
Well, thank you for that final comment on connection. And clearly, there are many more, and we want to continue the conversation. But thank you again so much for being here with us. And we look forward to continuing our work with you. And thank you to Ms. Costa for arranging the presentation. This was really fascinating. So with that, this concludes our open session agenda. The Commission will meet again next month on Thursday, February 3, 2022, at 1:00 PM. And if there is no other business, the open session is now adjourned. And I wish all of you a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everyone.